All right. Thank you so much. Yeah, and Julie Roberts, she saw you speak out powerfully in New Orleans when the same forces shut down the last public school in New Orleans, and now every school in that city is 100% charter. That school was originally the first black public school in the New Orleans, Louisiana area, and charters closed it. That's what the Charter School recall folks are spending their money for. Thank you so much, Mike. We really appreciate all that you're doing over in Oakland. Thank you so much for coming over here and being a part of the call. We appreciate you so much. And now I am going to kick it on over to Mari. Thank you so much, Mike. Is Mari here?
I'm here. Hi, everyone. Hold on one second.
That's okay. And you know, I had forgotten to ask folks if you have any questions, but Mari, please put them in the chat. I unfortunately forgot to ask people if they have any questions or responses. They give us so much amazing information, and we really appreciate that. So it's great to have so many kids on this call, too. It's wonderful. It's great to hear kids' voices. Mari, do you want me to, and I know you're busy, we're all kind of busy here parenting. Would you like me to?
No, I could take it away. I'm ready.
All right, go for it. Thank you.
Like spaghetti. So, um, thank you so much, everyone. So, okay, next, that's what we have is San Francisco Public School Parent. Oh, no, sorry, wrong one. Sorry. Okay, next we have is San Francisco School Board Commissioner, the amazing Allison Collins, here to tell us to stand up and to push back against all these recalls that's happening right now here in San Francisco. Commissioner Collins?
Thank you. Really appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm very grateful for all of the folks that are on the call. It's dinnertime, and the fact that people are committed to having this conversation is really, just really inspiring to me. I want to, talking about being on, I mean, I was a parent volunteer. I was an educator in classrooms. And because of the organizing that I did with other families and the time that I've spent working in the district to create change, I realized that, at the time that I ran, if I didn't run, that there would be things that wouldn't happen for families that I had been advocating for. And so I ran. And similarly, President Lopez, she had to leave the classroom, something that was really her heart and soul. But we did it out of a commitment to the communities that we serve. And we felt extremely honored when we joined the board to be able to enact changes that honestly I had been waiting for as a parent for decades. So immediately, President Lopez, she became the first commissioner to propose legislation to support Latinx families. Right? And I mean, San Francisco, with all of its rich tradition, had never really honored or acknowledged the unique needs of the Latinx community. I had children that participated in arts programs in Chinatown and had to, you know, we were told to rent instruments, which is against the law, or we were given broken instruments. And immediately, President Lopez and I wrote a resolution to ensure all kids in the entire district had access to music programs. And we're not, and we became an arts equity district. So immediately, we were able to leverage our relationships with the community and not, in a sense, give them access to our system. And in that process, co-author resolutions with a variety of communities to reflect kind of longstanding concerns that had not been addressed. And as a result, you know, as Mike said, you know, we're now seeing the results of that work, both in the changes that we see in the district, but also in the pushback that we're seeing externally. And we're also seeing that nationwide. So I wanted to give people kind of a larger perspective. If folks have been following what's happening with the school board and specifically, you know, how President Lopez and I specifically have been targeted, it's really been a year that has been one of the hardest years outside of just the pandemic, just the personal attacks beyond just, you know, regular kind of controversies that you see and that we expected as school board members. The direct personal attacks on us and our families and also on students who serve on our school board has really been kind of mind-boggling. And as I have looked out on kind of what's been happening nationwide, I'm also seeing that across the country. Educators that have pledged to teach the truth are actually being threatened to be fired with anti-CRT legislation. And I'm seeing black superintendents and black principals who just basically say Black Lives Matter are being removed from their positions. And so this is system-wide, there's a purging of our public education system. And there's a real clawback that's happening as basically the kind of Stop the Steal movement has moved from the federal level to the local level and is looking to take over control, both of our education system, but just a political power in general. And so I just wanted to say, you know, from my position, I'm a volunteer. We get paid $500 a month to do a job without any staff. And it really is, if you're doing it for the right reason, it's a labor of love, but it is obviously, you know, very challenging work. And we cannot be successful if we don't have support from local community members. And we need folks to have our backs. And I've had conversations with President Lopez about, you know, our concerns, not just for our ability to continue to do the work, but that there won't be folks who will want to follow in our footsteps in the future. Because nationally, and this is even true for just classroom educators, as folks who are, you know, real warriors for our communities of color and folks who are really advancing racial justice, you know, take a stand, we need folks to have our backs. And we really need to look at what's happening, you know, in our nation around who's standing up and making sure that our voices are heard. So I just want to encourage you, San Francisco is unique. And there are things that we are doing here that would not, we'd not be able to do in other parts of the country. And for that reason, we have become a target. And individually, you know, commissioners have become a target, but it's not about us. It's about what we represent. And we need all of you to get involved. And we need you to be loud and proud of the work that we have accomplished and really fight hard for our city and for our public education system. Because if we don't act and if we don't get engaged, and if we, you know, I've heard people say, you know, like, "The truth will set you free." Well, somebody has to set the truth free. Somebody has to get the word out and counter the disinformation that's out there, and counter the lies, and stand up for educators that don't have PPE and are still working in our classroom, and for students who are demanding that we fix the way that we address sexual harassment and sexual assault. And we need to stand up for black students who are tired of dealing with racist bias in their schools, right? One of the things that I'm working on now is a result of legislation or policy that we passed in January that's considered very controversial. And the most, you know, the most important aspect of the Lowell Resolution is that we establish an equity audit, and there are people actively fighting to remove me from office, in part because that will stall the work that we're doing. And they're also fighting to remove individual volunteers on the NAACP from that committee because they don't want to see it move forward. And unfortunately, because of these attacks, we cannot get students to volunteer because they don't feel safe. And I honestly don't feel that they are safe because they've also experienced cyberbullying and personal attacks to them and their parents. So we need to form a wall, like the ones we see in Seattle, you know, where you have Black Lives Matter protests, and you have walls of white allies and other members, like, coming out to kind of block and protect. We need to start doing that online, and we need to do that in our communities. We need to, you know, like, share, support, uplift the message of folks that are, you know, anti-recall efforts and of commissioners like us and educators and student organizers. And we need folks to get out the vote, make sure we're putting up window signs and dropping lit and making our voice heard in board meetings because we have a very small minority of folks who are very well-funded and well-organized, and they're able to amplify their voice. And we have the right, you know, we have the truth on our side, but we won't win if we don't get active and we don't, you know, get engaged in this fight. So again, I deeply appreciate those who've come out and who've been consistent in supporting me. And I will keep fighting. But, you know, we can't do it alone. We need to do it in solidarity, and we need to do it, we need to do it now. So thanks again for having, taking the time.
All right. Thank you so much, Commissioner Collins. It was really, really wonderful hearing you. Really appreciate you. Really appreciate your voice. And you are with people who stand with you. So thank you very much. We're going to be fighting really hard this next month. And next, we have San Francisco Public School Parent and Special Education Advocate Alita Fisher to discuss breaking down barriers and inclusion in our public schools. Alita, welcome.
Thank you, Brandy. Thanks, everyone. It's great to be here. As Brandy mentioned, I'm the proud parent of three SFUSD students and one graduate. All my children have IEPs, or Individualized Education Programs, because of their learning differences. I'm active in San Francisco Unified's Community Advisory Committee for Special Education, and I'm a special education advocate by profession. So what does this recall mean for students with disabilities? Well, frankly, it scares me. Speakers before me made the connection between the recall and charter school supporters. And look, I also serve on the Charter School Oversight Committee here in SFUSD. And we're lucky to have some charters that follow our governance structure, allow their educators to join our unions. They're part of our Special Education Local Plan area. But tell me, how many of those schools have programs and special day classes for our most impacted students? How many of those charter schools have special programs for students with autism or emotional disturbance? None, actually zero. That work falls to our public schools. So many of the families with disability, families of students with disabilities here in the city rely on our public schools to get the services they should be receiving through our public health system. Unfortunately, there's just as much inequity there as there is in our schools. Right now, the wait time to receive services such as occupational therapy or mental health support through Medi-Cal-funded programs is six months to a year. Where do our kids actually receive those services? In our public schools. For me and many families like mine, this recall is a real distraction. We have so much work to do in our schools to address the negative impacts of the pandemic. The pandemic took an already stressed and underfunded system and pushed it towards the brink of collapse. In the past years, special education expenditures have increased 28% here in California. Both state and federal funding for special education has actually decreased when you take inflation into account. The federal law that governs special education is supposed to be funded at 40%. Right now, it's funded at less than 10%. Our advocacy should be focused on fully funding education, not fighting recalls. So this year, the theme of Inclusive Schools Week, which happened the first week of December, was rebuilding together. Which, for me, that's a great message that all of us in San Francisco really need to be hearing right now. This theme really exemplifies the work that President Lopez and Commissioner Collins are doing right now. So the CAC, and I'm not here to talk on behalf of the CAC, I'm here as a parent myself. But the CAC has been focused on improving literacy rates in our district for the past decade that I've been involved with the work. As you may know, less than half of SFUSD students are reading proficiently right now. And when you take our reading rates and you break them down by socioeconomic status, by race, by ethnicity, well, then our pervasive and ongoing equity gap, it just gets laid bare. This year, this school year, President Lopez and Commissioner Collins have authored a new resolution, "Reading is Critical to Lifelong Success." This resolution is aimed at improving literacy rates in our district, not just by reviewing curriculum, but making systemic changes to screening and training practices. This resolution is already bringing people together, and it hasn't even been fully adopted. Central office staff, educators, school psychologists, family members, we're all starting to meet. We're all doing the work together that's previously been done in silos. There's a lot of great people in our district doing great things. And by working together and focusing on our students instead of recalls, we can do great things. Thank you.
All right. Mari?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Alita. Does anybody have a question or response for Alita? You say it in the chat, then I can read it out loud. I don't see any currently right now, but what we can do is Alita can, I guess, message back to whatever questions and answer.
Absolutely.
Move on. Thank you again so, so much, Alita, for all your work. And saying no recalls. So now we're going to bring in Lea Malavie, who is an SFUSD parent and a legislative aide at the San Francisco Board of Supervisors and who is here to talk about how our schools need more resources and not recalls. So say with me, everybody, "Resources, not recalls." Take it away, Lea Malavie.
Thank you, Mari. Yeah, as a parent, I get that we want the best for our children. And as Alita was saying, COVID-19 has really made the disparities worse. It's true for our families, and it's true for the entire school system. But the school board recall instigators have been using the pandemic to drive a wedge in our communities. Have you heard the line that schools are failing us? I come from working in public education for over 20 years. And one of my favorite jobs was that first one mentoring, starting a mentoring program with teachers at Thurgood Marshall and a middle school, Gloria R. Davis, that used to be in the Babe deal. And I get how families struggled. I had a kid who came back from Christmas, and he was not doing well in his classes. His house had burned down. That's real, and that's also symbolic of what has been happening to our systems and what people are trying to dismantle. So when City College was threatened with closure a decade ago, I'd been there for a number of years. And with the educators union, I was on the front lines to save the college. But all over the news, this Treasure Community College was blamed. And it took a lawsuit from the city attorney that pointed to other agendas going on. So we understand that public schools are starved and that it's the underfunding here in California that's at the root of a lot of the problems. So, you know, at the school board meetings and in our communities, you hear criticism. It's late into the night. You know, the commissioners, the parents on this call, they get it. That's part of the democratic process. Parents and advocates, you know, want our schools to be better. I work as a legislative aide now to one of San Francisco supervisors. And I've been convening a group of SFUSD parents in our district for over a year. They're focused on the after-school support that working families need and bring more resources to the district and open communication. One serves on the PAC. They're focused on budget transparency. So they're not out there attacking leaders who are trying to fix these problems. Commissioner Collins mentioned that the recall isn't about us, about them as the leaders, but about what they represent. I've been getting these glossy mailers every day telling us to vote for the recall, and some of them in Chinese. And my send schools, they've always translated the newsletter into Chinese and Spanish. But that's not why this Well Fund campaign wants to turn communities of color. It's trying to divide us. So, you know, we just celebrated Martin Luther King Jr. on Monday. And we have to remember that part of our shared history is that we have this diverse country in 2022 because of the civil rights movement half a century ago. The civil rights leaders had led the way, pushing on the country's elected officials then to lift the racist immigration quotas that were in place for decades. And that really ushered in a new era of immigration laws and brought the diversity that we have, not just in our schools, but all our communities. So let's unpack this recall. You see all this big money pouring in. 75% of the funding for the recall are donations that are greater than $10,000. And the teachers have seen this playbook. Have you ever been to an educators' union rally? They'll call it out. Education is under attack. Stand up, fight back. So my closet poet created a few lines where, you know, the big funders would get together with their own rally, not that they ever have enough people, the 1% ever attends rallies, right? They say, "Public schools are targets to attack. Take the school board out the back." We're not gonna let them. And for them, it's not about education. It's about influence, and it's about what money can buy. I know I'm preaching here to the converted, you know, because we know how hard our school board members have worked to ensure that programs are preserved. You know, we worked legislatively on some programs that were bringing 800 SFUSD students to do internships and to work with younger kids this past summer. They were losing their funding. And Commissioner Collins really helped to bring that issue to light. So the city was able to patch up some of that funding this past summer. You know, we understand that our school board is trying to support the teachers, the pairs, the counselors, social workers, who are doing the jobs day in, day out with our kids. And they're definitely trying to make sure that the schools are safe. All 14,000 of those windows that haven't been working or needed to be tested right during the pandemic. So we need more resources for the district to meet the needs of children's and families. And we don't need expensive recalls that cost $3,000. So remember that the school board races are nonpartisan. Commissioners are public servants, and their small stipend doesn't cover anyone's rent check. Maybe it covers a parking space in town. You know, but around the country, we see this concerted effort to attack school board members. Ballopedia, this nonprofit, tracked school board elections in 463 districts last year. And so where there were sleepy elections, these are now lightning rods drawing a lot of attention. And the number one issue that has galvanized people in some parts is critical race theory. Without going too much into it, basically, this theory acknowledges that we have structural racism in the United States. It's in our criminal justice. It's in our education, our workforce, our housing, and our healthcare systems. And guess which states are banning the teaching of this theory in schools? Among those are Oklahoma, Tennessee, Texas, Iowa, Arizona, South Carolina, North Dakota. And I will say that, you know, you will find parents and families, communities that are progressive in these states, but it's about those elected leaders who are, you know, using these agendas to work against our elected leaders in the school board. So these issues, you know, like critical race theory, aren't specifically talking points in this recall, but you do see a larger attempt to disrupt public education. So, you know, if we were all collectively in a room, and I know we're all here all on Zoom, we do a chant. We do a chant the way the educators have. So I say, "Public education is under attack." You say, "Stand up, fight back." Public education is under attack. Stand up, fight back.
All right. Thank you so much, Lee. It is great to have your voice. Thank you so much for your advocacy for public education in so many venues as a parent in our public schools, and also your work in our community college. And it's very interesting to know the links and the patterns that people engage in when they're trying to undermine public education. So feel free at any point in the program to ask Lee any questions if one comes up. And I will kick it back over to Mari.
Hi, everyone. It's me again. Thanks so much again, Lee. So now we're going to be bringing in Carrie Sumanski. And I'm sorry if I missed the first name. I really am. I hope I did.
No, you did it perfect.
Who is an amazing SFUSD teacher. Talk about workers' rights and job quality in the context of these recalls. And is also an SFUSD's parent as well, who has a child who has been dropping off lit, just like my child as well. Thank you.
That's right. Thank you so much, Mari and everyone here. I'm so honored to be speaking for a little bit. I'm an SFUSD teacher. I teach first grade, six- and seven-year-olds. I also have a first grader. And kind of what I want to start with is, you know, thinking about as a teacher, what do the recallers want? The recallers want to get away from the business of desegregation. Recallers want to get away from the business of facing up to racism and gender exclusion in our schools. And recallers want to get away from centering inclusion of all of our students. And what they want to get back to is the business of centering their own students, which is the old business as usual. These recallers think that educator commissioners are distracted by the work of including and supporting our students with special needs, our students across the gender spectrum, and our students of color. But educators know that's not a distraction. Educators know that's the work. Reflecting our students in our curriculum, on our walls, with our language, in our bathrooms, and even on our school buildings is what makes teachers' jobs possible. We can't address whole children in buildings that do not reflect them and in buildings that do not show their values or even show them in any way. And for teachers, yeah, there are things like teacher housing, which is something that Commissioner Maliga has worked on. You know, teachers, we would like to be paid a little more, sure. All educators, especially our paraeducators, and especially our substitute teachers. We're not in crisis because people have disappeared. We're in crisis because nobody is willing to pay a living wage to all educators in this city. And so people working on housing, people, commissioners who support our unions, are important for a number of reasons. But I want to talk about housing for educators. It's really important, right? Because as housing costs here in San Francisco go up and up and up and up, gentrification doesn't not apply to teachers. It applies to teachers as well. And so the chance that students in our schools will have teachers that share their background, who look like them, who share their experience, goes down and down and down. The more expensive the housing gets, and the less we refuse to, you know, the less we actually pay teachers. And so that goes straight to the quality of the student experience and the teacher experience. If we can't afford to live here, that's really tough. And if teachers of color, especially, and people not inheriting generational wealth, can't afford to live here, then that deteriorates the quality of education for everyone in the system. So, but, you know, teachers aren't really in it for the money. We all know that. We're in it because we love it. And so for us, the fight to really serve all of our students and really include all of our students is the fight for the quality of our experience as teachers. And so, you know, as a teacher who went from being completely overloaded and under-resourced to begin with, then teaching in a pandemic and going back into schools without adequate masks, without, you know, windows that open. I know, especially Commissioner Collins, Commissioner Lopez, and Commissioner Maliga, we know that they have our back. And recallers would really like teachers to just be quiet and continue doing our jobs. But we're going to have an even bigger teacher crisis if that is what happens because we need to speak out about having the basics about what it takes to be present, healthy, and ready to teach in a classroom. The last thing I really want to say is that we know that the big money here is interested in charters and privatization, which we know exclude all of the students that Commissioner Collins, Commissioner Maliga, and Commissioner Lopez are working so hard to include. But also, we know that our children are nonprofit centers. They are our most important investment. And I know when I see these particular commissioners, And, and I know when I see these particular commissioners fighting for more resources that people who are recallers don't want to give. I know that those commissioners have our backs and have our students' backs. And that's why I'm out here speaking out against the recall.
Thank you again so, so much, Carrie. Amazing. I love always listening to our SFUSD teachers and all that they are going through. Thank you so much for teaching during this pandemic. So does anybody have a response or a question for Carrie? I will look really quick right now on the chat. And if you do, and we don't get to it right now, Carrie can just always message you right there in the chat. There you go. Any, without ado, thank you again, Carrie. No recalls, yes. So we're bringing in our San Francisco School Board President, Gabriela Lopez, who's going to speak about her with her work with migrant and immigrant families who are, would be very would be very, very impacted by the recalls. Take it away, Presidente Lopez.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much. Much of my work has always been around young people and even just being able to hear that and the excitement with our young people. It's, it gives me so much hope. I've been doing this work for over 10 years, specifically as a classroom teacher. And it begins with my experience as a daughter of immigrants from Mexico. Just seeing the inability to connect with my educators, the inability for my parents to connect and communicate with my teachers and just driving that need for future students to have this experience, this representation and this connection to their learning. My work has consistently tied in the importance of that, of building with students' families and community members, specifically enhancing language accessibility, which has, which is a key part of my experience growing up and what I've seen throughout our district as a classroom teacher and now commissioner. I'm, I have the ability to speak my family's native language, my students' families' native language, and have always translated important information and built that connection. At the start of the pandemic, we recognized in San Francisco, the people who were most impacted were our Latinx families, specifically in the area where I lived in the Mission District. So I did a lot of on-the-ground work supporting our Latinx families through a group formed here called the Latino Task Force in response to COVID. And there I was able to hold workshops ranging from social, social emotional support for families, providing arts activities and ideas to do at home and helping them understand and engage with the Board of Education. Because there's, there's so much throughout this process of being involved in, in education that many of us don't get to be a part of. And if that opportunity becomes less and less with the numerous barriers that are in place that the specific commissioners who are being recalled, myself and my colleagues, have fought this entire time to, to break down. I provided tech tutorials to be able to navigate our learning platforms while we went through distance learning. I helped parents and students set up their laptops, their wifi and really understand how to translate the information within these tools. And we were even able to deliver art supplies to students' homes, provide educational materials twice a week and just be exactly what a school classroom environment gets to do, which is build within that environment, create community and be able to, to build the trust that is so much, so needed, so necessary, especially right now. All of this work stems directly from my work in my Masters of Education program, which included familial ties to our classrooms curriculum. So much of what we've heard tonight, being able to bring those experiences, those stories to life in our classroom as a part of our learning experience. I've done home visits with all of my students. I've been able to, to learn about our neighborhoods and again, make that connection that we want our students to have when, throughout their learning experience in our district. As a commissioner and now president of the board, I've spent my time using those same concepts to ensure there's an ability for people like myself, for people like my family to participate in, in this entire process. The people I was elected to serve, students, educators, parents, have been fighting to make our educational systems better and finally feeling like they can see themselves as a part of the Board of Education. They are not billionaires. They don't have corporate ties. They want joyful learning experiences for all of our students. And this recall is an opportunity and takeover to take back that progress, the progress we have made as actual educators on the board. And once again, minimize the ability for workers, immigrant families and young people to participate. So this is, a lot of our work has been fighting and with the support of all of us, really being able to push back on what we've known throughout our time, throughout our work. So that money doesn't take over and really direct where our school district will lead.
All right, President Lopez, thank you so much. Do we have, let's see, so there's a question in the chat. I'll let you go ahead and take a look at that, President Lopez and Commissioner Collins. And feel free to ask questions. We really appreciate your leadership on the school board, President Lopez. It's been an amazing year with the pandemic and you have brought us through. So glad to see you, President, last year and then this year again. We, I know the board has full confidence in your leadership. Thank you very much. And now I are going to bring in Supervisor Dean Preston from the San Francisco Board of Supervisors, who will talk about the real estate money behind the recalls and the impact that the recalls would have on San Francisco's progressive movement in the short term and medium to long term. We have three amazing school board commissioners and we're now going to hear from Supervisor Preston why it is so essential and so critical and there is so much at stake. And he'll talk about Realtors having interest in school and the long-term fallout at this and the chase of recall succeed. Supervisor Preston, welcome. It's great to have you.
Thanks a lot, Brandy. It's good to be here with everyone and thanks for, for pulling this together to our revolution and the Bernie Krats and, and Mari and, and everyone who's, who's working on this. Really appreciate it. You know, I just, it's, it is, as others have said, it's just such a difficult time for everyone during the last couple of years and just really appreciate all the, all the work everyone's doing, all the educators and school staff and families and students. And it's been so many ups and downs and seems like, you know, in the context of politics, there's a lot of, I think, revisionist history about what's been going on at the school board and in our schools. And I, you know, I think one thing that's clear to those of us who've worked with these school board commissioners is that they all really share a deep commitment to, to equity, to our students, to educators. And also in this pandemic, to the safety of, of, of families and workers in our schools. Something that, that I think kind of gets taken for granted, but, you know, but, but with, especially with the, the push around opening and all the criticism of folks for just trying to be safe and, and, and careful and protect everyone in the pandemic. So appreciate all, all of their work. You know, I think in this context and other speakers have, have talked about this, right? I mean, we've got real needs in public education in our schools, everything from testing vaccines, you know, dealing with school segregation and inequities, the ongoing attacks on schools, the difficulties of retaining educators, the mental health challenges to everyone right now. And, and it feels often like really frustrating that we are diverted from devoting ourselves completely to those crucial things and, and instead have to deal with defending against these kind of attacks, right? And, you know, and, and folks have alluded to it before. And I won't repeat what's been said and thank you to everyone who made comments about it. But you gotta ask at one level, like what the hell's going on here with this recall, right? Like, and, and, you know, and I don't think I'm saying anything that different than what others have said. Like we know there's an agenda. You know, we know that this is a low turnout election, right? So let's be real that the more progressive folks who are focused on equity in our schools do well in general elections, right? They do well when more people vote. In, in these kind of special elections, you have lower turnout and it's far more likely that folks who could never win in a general election will get installed by an appointment of the mayor and, and that they can get, get folks out through a recall. So look at where the money's coming from, right? It's, it's a handful of billionaires. You got Arthur Rock dropping 400,000 bucks, for example, right? $400,000, not a public school parent, as far as I know. Just someone who somehow woke up one day and decided he's going to drop $400,000 into unseating three people of color from the San Francisco School Board, right? I mean, it's kind of nuts, right? It's like something out of a bad movie. The California Realtors Association, the fine upstanding California Realtors Association that revels in the light and funding candidates and fighting against legislation that will stop evictions. I mean, these are the folks that wrote California's Ellis Act, California's Costa Hawkins Rental Housing Act, the very things that make San Francisco unaffordable and drive working class people out of the city through evictions. That's what the California Realtors Association is all about. They spent gobs of money attacking me when I ran for office and now are spending gobs of money. I think they're up at over $50,000 on these mailers. The Chamber of Commerce, you cannot find an entity that is more anti-labor than the San Francisco Chamber of Commerce. PG&E, right? Tens of thousands of dollars, like do we really have to talk about PG&E? And again, what's PG&E doing, investing in unseating school board members, right? These folks, you know, these are basically the corporate equivalent of your schoolyard bullies, right? And they use lies and they use money as their weapons of choice in, in how they pick on folks and how they try to buy elections. So we've got, you know, over a million dollars coming in of this kind of money. It is clearly an effort to try to buy an election. It's serious and I, you know, appreciate everyone who's getting out there knocking, you know, knocking doors, dropping lit, because it's a lot of money, right? And money, you know, definitely influences votes. So I, you know, I think it needs to be taken very seriously, but it's a power grab. And as others have said, it's an attempt to privatize schools, take away power from unions and from progressive leaders. And also trying to appoint folks, and we don't know who will be appointed. We just know that they will be, they, they will be folks who are committed to the agenda that is driving this. And that is an agenda of privatizing schools, of further depriving public schools of resources and of not addressing racial inequities and segregation in our schools, right? I mean, that's what whoever gets appointed will be, all those things and a friend of the mayor, right? It's a political backroom kind of deal. And, you know, the reality is we have an election coming up in November, you know? And I say this even to the critics, people who, who have a different opinion of our school board commissioners than I do. It's still like, you know, vote however you want in November. But recalls are different and recalls of officials, especially officials who are not accused of any corruption, not accused of any gross misconduct, anything like that, but basically just are accused of doing what they said they would do when they ran for office. That's really what this is. And if you reward that, you will see more and more recalls in San Francisco. You're already seeing the recall attempt of Chase Budin. There are recall, you looked in Southern California, the recall attempts at Mike Boney and that one just failed in LA. That was because of his advocacy for homeless people, right? Like there is, there is a conservative streak that is using recalls as a way to try to oust people who are progressive from power when they can't win in general elections. So that's what we're up against. I'm totally opposed to the, these three recalls. I think it would make a big statement to defeat these recalls. Because look at the money, we've talked about the money, over a million supporting recall. What are you at, five, 10, 20,000 dollars against it? You know, like, but to win, right? To be outspent in that way and win would send such a powerful message that, that we mean it when we elect progressive leaders and we don't need a bunch of billionaires and big corporate entities coming in and trying to target low voter turnout opportunities to unseat our elected leaders. So please spread the word. Thanks for having me. I'll stick around, happy to answer any questions and just appreciate all of you who are fighting against these recalls. Thanks.
All right. So just one quick question for Dean. Why do you think London Breed is supporting these recalls?
You know, London Breed is, was supporting, you know, was supporting the lawsuit against the schools earlier with, with, with Herrera, which I think was, was a bad move. I think there's no secret that, you know, she is not aligned with real change and progressive values in San Francisco. And I think she wants folks on the board who are, who are politically aligned with not just her. I don't think it's personally about London Breed. It's London Breed has firmly aligned herself with the billionaires that we're talking about, right? I mean, that's who she is, is answerable to, who works with and, and whose agenda she serves. And so I don't think there's a real distinction between London, you know, London Breed's objectives and you name Arthur Rock, you know, Gary Tan, any of these folks, right? They, they agree with her more conservative brand of politics and I think she will appoint folks they will be very happy with if, if our school board members are, are ousted. So I think all the, short answer is all the reasons we've identified of what's behind this, I think are fundamentally consistent with, with Mayor Breed. And I think a lot of folks are in denial about Mayor Breed's politics, maybe not folks on this call. But, you know, when, it's not a mistake when she endorsed like Michael Bloomberg for president, right? I mean, these are her, her values and folks want London Breed to be a different kind of leader than she is. I think folks want to believe that someone who grew up in public housing in San Francisco would hold different values and, and, and folks, I think, need to just really focus on what she does in office, not what she says. And I think her trying to unseat progressive school board members is, is consistent with, with how she's been operating in office.
I agree. Thank you so much for that perspective, Dean. And we look forward to hopefully seeing you at one of our future lit drops. Yes, and I agree. I think those are really important points. Also important to note that Mayor Bloomberg really brought charter schools into New York and that London Breed unfortunately has a number of direct reports in jail and corruption charges. So thank you so much. Thank you again to all of your speakers tonight. Now I will kick it over to Mari, who is going to give us our call to action. Mari.
Okay. First, I have a quick question. Are we doing the special video surprise right now or am I doing it after the call to action?
Hey, let's do that for the call to action. We're having some video problems.
Okay. So I'll do the call to action and then we have a special video surprise for you all. So anyway, so thank you, everyone. All right. We've heard a lot of good talking points here tonight and a lot of folks who are directly experiencing the negative impact of these recalls, which a lot of you who are on the call as well, who are in the chat, are all chiming in as well. We're all being impacted by the negative impact of these recalls. Now, if you agree that we cannot allow these school board recalls to continue, please, 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 take a stand with us. There's something that everyone can do to lend a hand and make sure that folks vote no on the recalls. So whether it's making phone calls, a text fake, doing a lit drop this weekend, we have childcare there. We can plug you in with a way to help. So we want you to go to this link. It should be showing up. Someone should be putting in the chat, if it's not already in the chat. So we want you to show up at that link and we want you to sign up. And we want you to do either a lit drop, whether you do either a lit drop, whether you want to hang up a window sign, maybe you want to donate, please donate. Again, you saw that we are being outspent by over 1.1 million dollars. We are grassroots, people-powered campaign of SFUSD parents, SFUSD educators, SFUSD alumni. So, is that chat in the, is it being dropped in the chat now? Let's see. It will be dropped in the chat if it is not right now. There we go, several times. There we go. Thank you. And so, let me see, are we ready for our special surprise for everyone?
Hey, let's, let's, let's do our chant, and then it's gonna take a second to get it loaded up. We have a special video we wanted to show, but we're having some audio problem, video problems, so we'll have to end the call and try to hold on, and we'll come right back with our special, our special video.
Okay, so, Brandy, I'm gonna kick it to you for your very final thoughts, since you are my co-host. Thank you for co-hosting with me as well.
All right, yeah, it was a lot of fun, Mari. Thank you so much. So, I just want to thank all of you for spending time with us and being so proactive in this fight. This is how we make change, this is how we show love to our communities. So, just a reminder, the link to sign up, everyone should be signing up, just, you know, we'll get back to you and kind of match you up with whatever your interest is, and donate to the School Board Recalls Campaign, and sign up also to be a member of Our Revolution. We are so grateful to Our Revolution staff or the organization. We could not have done this really without their help, so please become a member. I'm a member. It's definitely worth it. It's wonderful to be a part of San Francisco, Brandy Kratz, but also to be a part of such a, something larger is fantastic. Thank you so much, and Mari, I'm gonna send it back to you.
Okay. Thank you so much, everyone. So, we're gonna do our chant, and then we're gonna do the video? Are we doing the video and then the chant? Someone tell me.
Let's do the chant first, and then I will, we'll get the video up and going, but it might, might be a little sloppy here.
It's okay. So, I have two chants for you all. So the first time, the first chant we're gonna do is Our Revolution one, and so you can unmute yourself, and I'm gonna say, when we organize, you're gonna say, we win, and I'm gonna say, when we organize, you're gonna say, we win. When we organize?
We win!
We win! When we organize?
We win!
When we organize?
We win!
Now, our second chant is a chant that I made up with my baby the other day, and so it's gonna go to No Recall chant, so it's gonna be, vote no on ABC if you care about democracy. So I'm gonna say, vote no on ABC, and you're gonna say, if you care about democracy. So vote no on ABC. If you care about democracy. Vote no on ABC. If you care about democracy. Vote no on ABC.
If you care about democracy.
Vote no on ABC, what, what? If you care about democracy. Vote no on ABC. If you care about democracy. Thank you so much, and we have a very, 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 very special video message. Do we have that video message ready? This is a very special person. This person has been a huge, huge, huge supporter of No Recalls, but is an elder, so, you know, is staying mainly at home, but is super, super active online. Every time he can get opportunity, he's like, no, no recalls everywhere, and he made a special video message just for us, and no one has ever seen it. We have not put it on our social media at all, so we're all gonna watch it now together, and then we'll watch another, I mean, then I will upload it later. Okay, let's go. Let's see our special video message. Put in the chat who you think this is. I don't think anyone can hear it. If the special video message cannot be shown today, I promise we will post it on our No Recalls Facebook page. Can someone please put it in the chat, our No, Facebook, our No Recalls Facebook link? But Tom Amiano really wanted it.
Amiano, and I am opposing the recall of the board members, not because I think everyone is perfect, but I think I have some street cred, you know? I'm a parent, a grandparent, the kids went to all public schools in San Francisco, I taught school for 28 years, I was on the school board, so I think I have a good grasp of the dynamic of the school district. Elections are meant to express support or opposition. A recall like this is gonna disappoint everybody, even the critics. It'll result in dysfunction and more disruption than we need, especially during COVID. And I'm gonna put my own two cents in. I think a more responsible school board would also be, would also be helpful to that if people had that as their full-time job. In other words, I think eventually we should look at salary and benefits for school board members like they have in other districts, LA, so that it's not just staff-ridden or a part-time job, but a full-time job. Vote no on the recall. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tom Amiano, one of our major, major supporters, and amazing, amazing queer elder here in San Francisco. So thank you again, everyone. When we organize, we what? We win! We organize, we?
We win!
Exactly, please take the energy, please sign up, we need your support. The only way we will win is through people power and organizing and pounding that pavement. We look forward to seeing you this weekend at our lit drop, Saturday and Sunday, 11:00 AM, at Parque de Niños. We will be there, and we will have childcare, and possibly even snacks, but definitely a smile. Thank you so much. Peace!
Thank you.
Can we take a picture together real quick? Bye, y'all. Cheese!
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone.
The recording has stopped.
The recording has stopped.